Hi, everybody. Welcome to another edition of the Weekly Work Session with Get Oil-ing. I'm Coach Ashley. We are joined by a special guest today as well as our entire team, Greg and Amanda, and Kim in the tundra of North Dakota. I joke with you guys about that cold weather all the time, and I know that you're laughing at me because I would not survive there. So as you guys are coming in, let us know how excited you are to hear about this strategy. When I was interviewing our guests yesterday in preparation for this webinar, I was floored at the numbers. And when you realize just how easy this is, if actually, I think for a lot of you guys, how familiar this strategy might be, you're going to kind of bonk yourself in the forehead and say, "Why I haven't? I've been doing this all along." So go ahead and come over into the chat. Let us know if you're in Florida, how jealous we should be of you. Hi, Janet. Guys, I'm going to pull some slides up here in just a second, and we're going to get this show on the road. If you came here today and you're brand new, this is your first time joining us live on a weekly work session, we welcome you. If you're one of our many new members, we welcome you to the family. If you came here seeking help today, we are going to do with some training first, but we are also here for you. If you've got any questions, go ahead and pop those in the Q&amp;A, and we'll be getting to you after we go through this cool training we've got here. We got more Florida. You guys are just here in the comments to troll us. Another Florida. This is like, we're just, we think we have Florida in the comments. I love you guys. Where are you? I'm coming to visit. All right. Let me grab this share real quick here, and we're going to get going. Oh, we got Georgia. Ooh, what part of Georgia? I love Georgia. It's like a second home to me. All right, here we go. So we're going to go ahead, sorry, panel, we're going to stop our videos so that we can focus in on this training. All right, fabulous. So can you guys see my screen?
Yes.
Perfect, thanks. All right, so today, we're going to talk about a way to share Young Living. And our special guest today does this on a weekly basis with as many as 60 people consistently without hosting classes in the way that you've probably been taught to do. This is super exciting, isn't it? All right, so first, I want to extend a welcome to you. We do have a special guest training from our Get Oil-ing community here today that you're going to meet here in just a minute. You're going to learn today how to get in front of 60-plus people per week, just like she does, without classes. And then, of course, we're going to take your Q&amp;A as we always do. So if you've got questions, if you're here needing help today, go ahead and add those questions to the Q&amp;A. All right, so our guest trainer today is Laura Morrison, and she's been with Young Living for eight years. She started locally networking two years ago, guys. This is what this is going to be all about today, is meeting up with people locally and getting this done in a really time-efficient and fun way. She is able to share Young Living in front of a dedicated group, or actually several dedicated groups of professionals in her community, two to three times per week. She's sharing and building trust and community with as many as 60 people per week doing what she's doing right now. And guys, this strategy, just being able to tip her friend off to what she's doing, basically allowing her to take advantage of an opportunity that Laura didn't want to get up that early for. That friend, and she'll tell you the story here in a bit, that friend increased her organizational volume over 150,000 over two years, over the course of two years, by doing this one thing. All right, how many of you, a quick show of hands, want to know how to get that result for your business? How many of you would wake up a little earlier to get that? Ooh, look at those hands. All right. So today, Laura is going to teach you guys how to network like a pro. You don't need to clean your house, to set anything up, to carry around a ton of inventory to get this done. She's going to show you how people will always show up, not just to hear from you, but to get to know you, and so on, how you can sign up businesses in your community easily, simply, painlessly, like nothing weird, and you don't have to memorize anything strange, and how you can become known as the go-to person locally, easily, right? And also how you can get tons of referrals from local businesses. And guys, this works for every personality type. You don't have to be any type of personality color to make this work. This can work for anyone, because the format is how really everything is dictated. So plus, and this is really, really cool. This was something that kind of blew my mind when she was talking with me yesterday. She's going to share with you a really awesome, low-cost, like crazy-low-cost and super-efficient way to share samples without having to buy a bunch of little bottles and spend, you know, tons and tons of hours just to be able to give people an experience with the oils when you're sharing. So what we're going to cover today is first, the mindset you need to be successful in this strategy. You're going to learn, Laura's going to teach you how to identify and join the right groups. We're going to share with you how to show up and share in those groups, how to meet up and share with members one-on-one that you meet in the groups, and then, of course, how you can use Get Oil-ing with this strategy. Now, guys, let's meet Laura. So if you've got questions, go ahead and ask them in the Q&amp;A. Laura, tell us about how you got started with this approach, and why you love it.
I love it because I like people, and I could not survive without Young Living, nor my husband. We use about, oh, somewhere between $700 to $800 a month of products that are necessary in our life to keep going. And I think, just like Gary said, you know, let the world know. Let the world know. And so I want to let the world know, because it's just awesome stuff. But first, I want to let the world know they're cared about, because that's also the way that he operated, right? So anyway, so when it comes to networking, it was the best thing for me to do physically and otherwise, because I've had some surgeries, I'm a bionic woman. And so, yeah, it just worked out great for me, and I started doing it, and I just found out it was my jam. I really absolutely enjoy it.
Awesome, awesome. And so when you think about the... And guys, go ahead and start asking your questions. You are going to get to ask Laura questions about her strategy. Maybe a quick show of hands while we're here. How many of you have used networking groups or are currently using networking groups in your community to meet new people and to share Young Living? Okay, we got a couple here. Cool, cool. All right, so here, Laura, let's just go ahead and let's get this going. I mean, I want you to, you know, absolutely just kind of, you know, expound on this to the nth degree, to the degrees that you want to. I know I'm kind of controlling the things here, so I'm just going to have this all the way up for you. So kick us off. How do we get started with this?
Well, like it says in the outline, make it about them. Because when it's about them, then what's needed for them will follow. Be yourself. I'm a little bit offbeat. I like to use humor, because people pay attention, and then they are looking forward to hearing me each time, because they have no idea what prop I might have with me, or how silly I might be. And I thought at first, I thought, oh, that's not going to work with all these professionals. I suppose if I was in a professional group with attorneys, maybe not. But the more I am me, the more I'm surprised people really are liking me, because then I can get to like them and hear from them. So when you go to networking, what you want to do is kind of be an observer, take notes, study people, and it's really one of those things I find to commit for the long run. I've seen people come in the groups, they come and do their one minute, and they've got this fantastic whatever thing, you know, shiny object, and then they're out. Or like, you know, they pop in every three months. That doesn't work. You know, you've got to be seen, I'd probably say regularly, at least for two months. Sometimes you can't make all the meetings. But then, you know, go every other or something. You've just got to keep in there. Some networking groups have even a greater requirement than that. You'll just have to see as you go what it is and check it out, either on the bio, on, you know, what the networking group is like. But yeah, it's great. And then I think, as I've gotten experience, I've seen other networkers come in, and that's number five, as you grow, help others. And it's just been really fun to take the person that's really like stammering, and, "Well, if you want to, I can do this for you." And then afterwards, you just, you know, wow, great for you for coming, you know, that is awesome. And I think what you have is something fantastic to offer. You know, there might be a different way you could say that. Would you like to know? You see there, yes. So then you just kind of mentor them and say, "You know, the best thing is, tell me about a testimonial." Or, you know, be confident. You really are good. And I've watched some of them just light up, and now they are just taking off. And I'm sure it's not all me, but I was glad I could be there to encourage them. And believe me, they're also one of my people that would give me referrals, because they did that too. So kind of, you're a giver, and then out of that, you're a receiver.
I imagine, Laura, this is something that, you know, that a lot of people might be afraid of doing, you know, kind of going into a room of strangers and talking about yourself, talking about your business. But it sounds like the environment in these groups is pretty fundamentally supportive, no matter what it is that you're bringing to the table. Would you say that's true?
Absolutely.
That's awesome. That's awesome. So guys, be encouraged if you've, you know, if you've been afraid of speaking in front of people. When you go into one of these types of groups, and we'll get into here on the next slide, what these groups are, what they look like, even some of the names, for those of you who are not familiar with using local networking groups. But understand that even if you are like, "Oh, my God, I'm terrified of speaking in front of people," there are really, really supportive people in these groups that are, you know, that you can become friends with. I mean, isn't that true? You make a lot of friends doing this, don't you?
Absolutely, absolutely. I was a little bit afraid because of, with these surgeries, I have these funny shoes I wear. And I was thinking, "Oh, man, all these people are wearing these other shoes, and these outfits, and all that stuff like that." I mean, I didn't go in my pajamas either, but I was just like, okay, can I go in some of these professional networking groups, or the Chamber of Commerce, wearing tennis shoes, really? They don't even notice.
Oh, no. No, absolutely not. Absolutely not. Very cool. So yeah, be yourself, whoever you are, however you show up, whether you are a loud and proud blue personality, which is who you expect to be in these groups, or, you know, no matter who you are. Absolutely, that's so awesome. All right, so let's start talking about how you can pick and then join the right groups for you personally, right? Because this is kind of like a personal preference thing, and then, of course, also for being able to share Young Living. So can you tell us more about what that looks like?
Okay, so there is a, well, whether it's an app or you look online, there's a thing called meetup.com. It's not all about networking group. It's about people that even want to go and get a group of people running. So you need to look through it, and then each, excuse me, networking group has a bio there. It'll say when it meets, it'll say a little paragraph about what it's about. And then you can often even message the person, the organizer of it, if you have questions. Another good way to find networking groups is contact your local Chamber of Commerce. If, you know, there's usually vendor events, whether you're participating them or not, you know, as a Young Living person there, you can still go to vendor events and find other vendors and say, "Hey, do you go to networking groups? Where are they? Can you give me a name?" That type of thing. So that's another way to, you know, find out where they're at. And then if you're having a hard time finding one really close by, if it's not too far to commute, go ahead and look beyond your immediate town. That's what I did. I actually, I don't go to the one that's in my town, or, I don't know, there's probably about five. It wound up being, for me, about 15, 20 minutes away. And for some reason, that area has just been golden. And then most, yeah, most meetings are typically, but not always, early AM or evening, but there may be a few during lunch, or even midday, like one of mine. Some meet weekly, bi-monthly, once in a while, once a month. The last, I would say, has less traction. Try to go for ones that meet at least, you know, every other week or weekly. That's just the better thing, because it's, like I said, you just don't see each other as often, and then people are in and out. It's not a very good networking option, just once a month. And then there's different types. Some networking groups only allow one person per industry. Like, there can only be one Realtor, one chiropractor, one carpet cleaner, and one essential oil rep. The ones I belong to came to the decision way before I was there that life works with a variety of different businesses. You know, you go down the street, there could be two different insurance companies, and therefore, they allow more than one person per industry. And we all get along. We all each have something unique to offer and bring to the table. So that works really well. When I have, which actually, I was surprised, hasn't been very many other essential oil reps show up. Thankfully, I was already there first, established a good relationship in the networking groups. I'm in three of them. When they do show up, though, be respectful, be kind, even go over and be encouraging to them, because people are watching how you respond to competitors. They really are. And it speaks volumes. Then sometimes later, it's interesting, well, whether somebody did show up to the meeting from another company or not, sometimes I will get a question about, "What's the difference between such-and-such company and Young Living?" And I just say, "Hey, I chose Young Living because it worked for me when I was introduced to it, and it's also worked for those I love and my clients, and it has a 25-year amazing record of seed-to-feel quality." But if they do choose the other company, I'm so grateful. They're not buying cheap, potentially harmful synthetic stuff from somewhere else. They get it. That's all I say. And joining fees, wow, they can vary, anywhere from free, which I have one that's that way, so cool, to $300 to $500 a year. Now, I will say, in some of those $300 to $500 a year, if you are really a go-getter, then you might make it back. This is that group that Coach Ashley was referring to. I just couldn't get to it. And my friend, it's called B, like boy, N like Nellie, I, and they're actually nationwide meeting. And she was a real, she knew how to work it. She still knows how to work her business. She had 150,000 OGB gain in two years from just that one meeting. Now, that's not my story, but that's okay. I'm happy with the, you know, 20-plus clients I've gotten in two years, considering I've had surgery in between. So, yeah, I would say that there is all sorts of possibilities. You just need to check them out. And when you check them out, some of the ones that do charge, they will allow you two free times to go. And then you can see, is this kind of my tribe? Is this the group that I can see myself spending the money for and the time to be there? Because it is a commitment of time. So that's kind of the how-tos. Did that explain that well?
Yeah, yeah. Laura, what would you say, you know, because obviously, especially for someone who is just getting started, perhaps, with sharing Young Living and growing this as a business, what would you say are really the main sort of most important characteristics of one of these groups that you might invest in? Because I think that a lot of us might steer toward the free stuff. But, I mean, I know from my own experience in using the strategy and having, you know, built teams using this strategy, that the paid groups tend to be higher-quality prospects and connections, depending on the market that you're in. So before someone, you know, puts $300 to $500 in on an annual membership, what are they needing to really be looking for to make sure that that's going to be a great investment for them?
You know, usually, there is not only written bios and listening to other people that you're talking to, like perhaps the vendor that you found out about it from. Usually, they're pretty good about laying out what their group is about. And there are, you're right, there are some groups very intentional upon helping each other make not just contacts with each other, but outside their referrals. That's the word for it. And so I think listen to see what is there. Now, in my case, the free one happened to be associated with a Chamber of Commerce, and which amazingly, in my case, and maybe some others, I don't know, they're in an awesome community. And for some reason, because I'm network marketing and not like a storefront business, they gave me such a good deal to join the Chamber.
Oh, wow.
So that's another thing, that if it's possible for you to do that, just got to check your budget, got to check what, you know, the cost is for the networking meeting. What's been great about that is being a member of the Chamber is great name dropping. When I've gone during the summer, and I've gone to different businesses when I was going to do, you know, like a kids' event with somebody else, and this, you know, when you're going to do other events local, or you just want to be there to perhaps see, you know, a hair salon, and you want to talk about lavender, and how it can help their fingers when they get a little hot on the curling iron, you know, whatever, you know, maybe a veterinarian place. There's all sorts of businesses each one of you may relate to that you want to reach out to. And when you go in, you go, "Hi, I'm Laura Morrison, and I'm a member of your local Chamber, and I'd love to, you know, help the owner be able to succeed every way that she can, or he can. And is there a time I can make an appointment to talk to them? I've just gone in cold."
That is awesome. And you get that appointment, don't you? Because you're name dropping the Chamber, because you're a part of a shared organization.
Yes, yes. And volunteering for the Chamber. I mean, even if you don't have the money, maybe, let's just say, the Chamber is $200 or $300 or $400 a year. If you don't have the money to join them right away, you know what? They'll take your volunteer work. You volunteer, you get to be a face there, you get to be favored, and they love it when you volunteer and help with things. And then you're volunteering to be a part of, you know, like they have this big event every summer down by the beach, and they have vendors and all that. So I, it just didn't work for me to be a vendor by myself. But I was a volunteer there. I got to know people. I got to talk to people. And then even if you're not a member of the Chamber, even saying, "I'm a volunteer for the Chamber", still name dropping. It works. It helps. And, you know, there you go. So that was my free group, because they hold it in the Chamber building, and they don't charge, which is interesting. I think it's their way of getting Chamber members is why they do that.
Yeah, that makes sense. Wow. And just, and for those of you who are not familiar with the Business Networking Group, so like with BNI, there are a number of other examples that are regional, or national, or international, that, you know, we could probably start talking about later on. If anybody here is a member of a group like that, and you want to share the name of it, just to give some ideas, definitely put that in the chat. But the way that that works is, like, you know, you're not just paying, you know, $300, $500 a year to be able to go sit down and meet once a month, right? Like, there's a format there, and there's a specific expectation. Everybody is paying that amount of money, you know, basically, so that they promise that they are going to behave in a particular way, which is to show up, right, enough times to, and to help get others in the group referrals, right? So you're kind of paying for people to network for you, if you think about that from like an investment in your business perspective. So if you could have, how many people would normally be in these groups, or at least the ones that you're a part of?
Gosh, it can range anywhere from 15 to sometimes, there's been 30.
Wow, wow. So you could have as many as 30 people with an assignment for a group that they want to stay a part of, with an assignment to find one or two people to introduce you to? How many of you would love to have 30 people out there actively looking for a couple of people to introduce you to per month? How incredible would that be for your business? Oof, all right. So yeah, yes, we want that. All right, so let's talk about, you know, when you pick a group, you know, maybe you go and you do a little test, you know, test visit, you go and check them out. Let's talk about what happens in these, and we're going to break down each of these. So, and specifically talking about the Business Networking Groups, you basically have three primary things that you're going to be able to do to share your business. First, on a weekly basis, you kind of give a quick elevator speech, and Laura's got some amazing ones we're going to talk about here in just a second. You also have the opportunity, you know, monthly or quarterly, depending on the size of the group, to be a featured speaker. And then, of course, on an occasional basis as well, you may, depending on the type of group, even have a presentation table. So I want to go over each of these three things that you do in these groups, and how Laura uses these things to grow. So let's start off with the elevator speech, right? This is something I think that makes a lot of people kind of uncomfortable, because we have to talk about ourselves and kind of figure out some kind of quippy way that doesn't feel weird, you know, to talk about ourselves, talk about Young Living. So you mentioned to me yesterday, there's basically two different ways that you do this. First is really kind of leaning into the, "Hey, I'm new here. I don't know what I'm doing", which is great, and everyone should do this, lean into it when you have the opportunity. And then you've got a more standard one. So Laura, please, take it away. Tell us about these ways that you sort of talk about yourself and Young Living in these environments.
Okay, so the "I'm new here", it's not just only so much that I'll say, "I don't know what I'm doing". What I say is, "I'm here to listen and to learn from you, all of you." Because that's what they want, is they want your ear. And I want to hear about them. I mean, it's just such a fantastic opportunity to hear about amazing passions that people have, and how like coaching, it's not one particular thing. It can vary. And so I like to draw out from people. Now, at the meeting, of course, there's a format. But when I'm meeting with them, I'm letting them know I'm there to get to know them, to get to understand how to network better, all of those things. And so when you go in kind of humbly, and you go in to say, "I'm here to learn and listen", people afterwards, you would be surprised. And that's, excuse me, another tip, show up a little early and prepare to stay after, because those are the golden times to chit-chat, not to market, but to chit-chat. Sometimes you will be tempted to market, because people will ask about your stuff. Believe it or not, most of the time, I go, "Oh, thank you so much. We can talk about that later. I really want to know more about you." That's what I do. And how are you going to know, out of our, what, 700 products, what's going to fit them? You know, so that's another reason why I want to get to know them. I mean, I'm not just looking to sell them something, but I wouldn't, at whatever points, the right time to have a product talk, you know, one-on-ones or whatever, which we'll get to, how am I going to know what on earth to recommend? If I don't really know what they're about, what their needs are, and also, the main thing that we're there is to be able to refer somebody to somebody else as well. So we need to understand who they are, what their business is about. So that's where those golden times are. And just be social, like, "Where do you live? Do you have kids?", you know, that type of thing. And it's just kind of fun to do. So that's the early or after, usually after. It is important to have some business cards. I mean, a lot of people, we understand, don't, like when we meet somebody out and about, it's us that has to follow up, you know, if we're talking about cold or warm market that we have. But when it comes to networking, it's quite a bit different thing. It is pretty expected that you would have business cards, and have quite a few, because if they're going to use them for referrals, and I would have your picture on your business card. See if you can get as best as possible, if you don't have a professional picture, because the business cards that don't have pictures, a lot of people are like, "Oh, yeah, who was that again?" But when you have your picture on it, that makes a big difference.
You guys, that is golden. I hope you're writing this down. I hope you're writing this down. This is why Realtors put their photo on their cards. How many times have you seen a Realtor give you a card, and it didn't have their photo on it? That is golden. All right, so we show up early, we bring cards. We plan to be social, because we're not looking to pounce on opportunity. We're looking to plant seeds, right? So when you, so you have the, "I'm here to listen", but what about, you know, as the format goes, and this is how these tend to work, you show up early, you socialize, but then when the meeting starts, you kind of go around the room, and everybody sort of introduces themselves, and you need sort of a quick little elevator speech, if you will. How do you approach that? Because yours isn't the same every single time you go.
No, it isn't, because I'm featuring things somewhat according to season, or perhaps like when Illuminize came out, and my husband, at 71 years old, still working on two computer screens, started getting results of that over, I mean, yes, we're definitely on Ningxia Red, but this was the eye boost that he needed to be able to actually really stay at work. So when Illuminize came out, and I knew that he got the effect, it's not just that. What I'm getting to, let me back up here, is testimonials. Stories sell, facts tell. Testimonials are huge, and they don't all have to be, you know, like you almost fell off the cliff, and then you drank your Ningxia. That's not it. And so, you know what I mean? So, and it saved you from falling. Although that's what I feel like some days, right? But, but you know, taking, taking a testimonial that's just real to you. Or like another one is, you know, I have a really good, let's see, I wrote this down here, give me a second here. Where'd it go? Oh, here we go. Um, you know, I'll just tell them, okay, so I have a friend and she uses this red unicorn drink that we have. And it enabled her to care give her mom, bless her heart, that has Alzheimer, with the energy and stamina needed and also without losing her own mind.
You call it a unicorn drink? I love it.
It gets people's attention versus antioxidant drink.
Yeah, no, that's perfect.
I think actually I stole that probably from, um, you know, Martha Crutchy at Girl for Girl. Hey, that sounds good. I think it was her or somebody else.
It does sound like something Martha would say. I got this unicorn drink.
Hey, look, take from everybody you can to get the good.
Absolutely. Take that inspiration. It's a gift. Beautiful. I think you mentioned, you mentioned yesterday when we were chatting um, about a way that you, I think you use CBD, like when you, um, just as an example of, of sort of your, you know, elevator, weekly elevator kind of thing. Can you tell us how you introduced yourself and you wove in CBD?
Yes. And by the way, I will be typing each a different comment. So if you want to screenshot it later and adapt it to yourself, I'll type the testimonials in there, not all of them, uh, and then a couple of other things. So here we go. Well, hello, I'm Laura with Key Oils. Let's talk about the ABCs of CBD. If you had a friend or family member planning to buy CBD from a nearby store, yet you were aware that hemp is a soil cleaner pulling up toxins like pesticides, arsenic, et cetera. Plus, it may be extracted with nasty solvents, solvents, oh my. What if you'd heard a study that said only about one-third of the products tested in Milwaukee actually contain the CBD strength that it was labeled for? Would you find it important to let your friend know that there's a company that actually offers CBD that's grown on certified organic land and uses in it the most effective essential oils from a company called Young Living, whom I'm happy to represent? Twenty-five years, the world's leader. If so, take my cards, pass them around. I am here to answer questions, send information, including those golden certifications of what it is and where it's from, how it's grown, help your family or friends to be free of nasty toxins while using a hundred percent true CBD.
Ooh, mic drop, mic drop. I love it. And you know what? I think yesterday, you even added a little bit of humor in. I think you might have said something about like DBC.
Yeah, I know. I was off the cuff and I'm like, what the heck did I say? I had a long day since we talked. So I was like, no, I'll just fight this out. But yes, make it yourself, use your humor. But that roughly, I know I took a little longer so that people could understand on this webinar, but practice these things, write them, rewrite them, practice them at home. You know, maybe if you want to, you're nervous, call a friend, a family member, practice it on them. And put your timer on, get it down, because usually it's a minute. Bet you got.
Mm-hmm. And then of course, remember, like we said on the last slide, people are here coming to these, uh, to these groups to get better at this very kind of thing that we're talking about right now. So you don't, don't think that you're walking into a, you know, I don't know, a group of people who are like seasoned pros at saying stuff like this. Like, you're all in the same boat, um, except, you know, you're gonna talk to the paper printer salesman um, and, and the carpet cleaning business owner, you know what I mean? You got, it's, it's, there's more camaraderie in there than you would expect. So don't be hard on yourself. Just
No.
Get it done. Awesome. So what about when you get to be a featured speaker? Hold on, I don't wanna, yeah, I'm gonna leave this until we get to the last one. Alright. So, um, so when, when you, how frequently do you get to kind of stand up and address these groups, generally speaking?
You know, each group is different. And that's another thing that you'll find out. One group, they allow us to have what's called a featured table every three months. And I, I pay for, oh my gosh, twenty bucks, big deal. And, uh, yeah, that's part of the member fee thing for the table. And so, yeah, I can feature products there. Now, of course, in my one minute, I can lift up something in my little hand and feature it too. And I do that. But this would be a greater thing. And usually I do bring the kit because that's the basic. Um, and then, uh, I don't want to overwhelm them. So I would say the same thing. Don't overdo what you have there. Have the, you know, the product guide, all of that type of thing.
Got you. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. But like at networking groups, one of the ones I did was, uh, um, okay, so there's goals and then there's affirmations. And as a part of that, there's intentions. Intentions is basically something about yourself, either to your business, to your family, to your life. You want to show up as, you know, positive or relaxed or whatever. And so that was one of the ones I did that has gone over really well. And so, like, for example, before the holidays, I had, uh, I was a featured speaker besides my table at a networking, uh, group called Speed Networking. You meet different people all at different times. Man, it's a blast. Um, anyhow, so I made these cotton rounds and I use them. I use them when I did do vendor events. I use them for cold calls sometimes. And I've even used them in networking groups. Um, there is one caveat, you want to be careful. If you're in a networking group and you don't know yet, there are some people, even though our stuff is pure, they have that sensitive nose, kind of like a dog, bless their heart. And you show up with too much fragrance that's being sent around the room, which I'll explain in a minute. They're not happy campers and that I don't want. So I kind of get to know if people are okay with that before I send these things around. So anyway, having said that, the thing that I do is I take a mason jar, put some cotton balls, and I'll put this in the comments later, the little recipe. Put some common cotton balls and you don't need to overload them with oils, like for example, say thieves. Great favorite one this time of year. Put a few drops on the cotton balls. Take cotton rounds, you know, those cosmetic cotton rounds, don't put any oils on them. Put them in the same jar as the cotton balls and then close the lid. It will not take very long and poof, you've got thieves' samples. And so like at the, um, networking group where I did the speaking thing on intentions, I use the oil of belief. Cause it's kind of woodsy and most everybody really likes that. So I had those cotton rounds. But before I handed them out, I had a little outline for them and I said, so let's say that we want to make an intention that we're going to get through the holidays with a sense of peace and purpose, uh, being purposeful. I can't find my notes on that one, but anyway, something like that. So you want to get through the holidays in a peaceful mode of being. And then, so I said, okay, everybody, let's say those words. And again, it was written out a little bit better than that, but sorry, basis, I am going to get through the holidays in a peaceful mindset. So I said, great, now take your little cotton rounds, take a good smell of it. And then let's say it again. I'm going to get through the holidays with a peaceful mindset. And their eyes were lighting up. Said, now, let's stand up and say that and show me your victory pose. It's January second and you got through the holidays, for the most part, with a peaceful mindset. Show me what that looks like. Are you hugging yourself? Are you dancing? Is your hand up in the air like a, you know, woo, that type of thing? And that's what I presented. So kind of just be creative to what fits you, but people really liked that.
Awesome. Are you, are you still there? Are we still with you, Laura?
I am. I just wanted to stop for a minute in case you wanted to say.
Oh, oh, no, 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 this is great. So, um, and, and just to kind of give folks an expectation here. It sounds like you, you had sort of printed out an outline. You did focus not on, say, you know, like you would in a lot of traditional Young Living classes, one oh one, or, you know, a product line. You went straight into a seasonally or, you know, just otherwise relevant topic to the people in the room, focused on that and then wove in an oil experience.
Exactly, exactly.
How many of you guys, show of hands, how many of you guys are mind blown at this cotton round idea? How many of you want to pass these around, right? How, oh my gosh, how much time and money does this save you, right? This is incredible. Um, really, really good tip there. Um, what can you give, just, just off like top of mind, are there any other sort of, uh, topics that, that you've, uh, kind of touched on when you've spoken in the past?
Well, when I do the, um, tables, this is at a different networking group. Um, when I've done the tables of product, again, normally I have the kit because it's a great basis. But I will seasonally focus on particularly some things. So like, oh, yes, I forgot to mention this and this is incorporated in any. Bring your hand purifier, which eventually the name on the little ones will change to sanitizer. But, and offer, say, would you like a little bit of this? It's very different than hand sanitizer. I haven't gotten anybody to turn me down. They put it on and they're just astounded. So whether you're doing a table or not, bring your hand purifier and just see if you can get it on people. Now immediately people like, can I buy some of that right now? I say, well, actually, you know, that's, thank you so much. I'd love to do that. However, that's not the way I roll and Young Living rolls. And you would probably really benefit better from a little bit more of other things that we have that help with immune. You know, like our spray that you can put on nasty grocery cart handles. And when you're traveling, you know, we all know how they clean up hotels, rooms and, 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 you know, airplane. Uh, excuse me, I'm, bleh, losing my mind this morning, I'm on five hours sleep again. Um, you know, but on, on planes, you know, we know how well they're cleaned, don't they? And people like rolling there. I was like, no, they're not. And I said, this is great spray. And there's a few other things, this, you know, cough bomb that I have and stuff. So I said, you know, would you like to know a little bit more about that? I can send you, which by the way, I make videos of this. Or I can send you a little bit more information or let's, better yet, let's just get together another time. I'll bring you a little bit of samples. And again, I really want to hear more about you. Should we do that?
Oh, I love it. That, that's perfect. So this is where we get into the next part of this. You guys, this is where this all leads. Um, obviously you can stand in front of a group of people and they can get used to seeing you and hearing about you and coming to, to know you uh, for what you bring to the table there. But this is all about the culmination of meeting with other people one-on-one. And through those relationships, either having those people get started with you as members or having them, of course, because that's the way these groups work, referring you to people that they know. So let's talk about these critical things, Laura, about how you are then able to work with these folks. Um, because you're, I mean, it sounds like you're MO. When people come to you, they're like, can I buy that? You're like, no, let's talk about it later. They're like, hey, tell me more about what you do. You say, let's set an appointment. It seems like when you're in the group environment, everything that you're doing is leading toward this sitting down with somebody one-on-one. Is that right?
Yes, exactly.
So what is that?
Now, it took me a long time to know that. I'm sure I would have had a lot more accounts if I kind of clicked in. I think it was just, you know, I was going through that surgery coming up and then after, uh, before I could get back. So sometimes we're a little slow to get things, but that's okay. It doesn't matter. You'll get there.
Uh-huh. So what do you, uh, obviously we've got a, a quick little bulleted list here. But tell us about what it looks like to sit down with someone one-on-one and how you're able to really comfortably and easily uh, move them toward becoming members.
Okay, I, I think exactly what you have there. Be the interviewer. Sometimes people will ask me and I'm like, well, thank you so much. Seriously, I really do want to know about, and maybe I'll pick something, if you've taken your notes well, when people are doing their one minute. I'd really like to know more about, you know, like for example, videographer. Okay, I'd like to know what exactly that you're going toward to portray the person in the business. Are you doing aerial photography, you know, videography for, uh, Realtors, you know, that type of thing? Or are you more going into businesses and taking videos that would show what they're like? Are you interviewing the owner on video? What are you doing? You know, and then pretty soon you get them talking about what they're doing. Because if you're gonna give a referral, say, hey, there's this great videography. Oh, really? What, well, what did they video? Oh, I don't know. You know, so you want to have that information so that you can make a decent referral. And also it gets them talking about them. And then, you know, you can say, well, how do you, you know, do you travel all over? Do you have family? You know, you can just kind of naturally lead into things about them. Or sometimes even before you, when you're coming into the one-on-one, they might be running in, oh, I just dropped my, you know, my Johnny off at school or something like that. And you're like, oh, really? Which school does he go to? Is he in sports? How old is he? You know, you're not like trying to get this so that you can immediately pounce on them with a product. But you're getting information to know about them again, so you can serve them well when that time comes.
Beautiful, beautiful. And so, um, and so what is, what does that transition look like then, right? I mean, it sounds like the, um, the overarching mindset here, the strategy is not to turn every one-on-one into a member right away, unless of course, it seems like a really great fit and they're like, yes, but show me what to do, right? Uh, so how, how do, you know, for, for someone who's never done something like this before, um, how do you then kind of move into, what are, what are some maybe transition questions that, that maybe come to mind for you? Or at what point in the, you know, in sort of the progress of the conversation, do you see typically Young Living coming up? And, uh, you know, you getting closer to that exposure?
Well, samples, actually, I probably should back up a little bit and say, when I set up the one-on-one, I say, you know, I really enjoy bringing something along with me that might be helpful to you, your family or your business. And then that's where, um, see, I'm just trying to find my other paper here for a moment.
Oh, while she does that, guys, please write what, please write down what she just said. Before you set up the one-on-one, I really like to bring something along with me that can help you or your business or your family, right? Or along those lines. Insert that before you schedule your meeting. Please continue. That's brilliant, Laura.
Yes. Okay. Um, and I, I will put down, give me a chance later. I've got to go back to bed after this because I'm only on five hours sleep. I am, and I'm not young, but, um, if I can sleep after all this excitement. Um, anyway, so I'll write down the other thing, the, the targeted question approach. So I'm gonna say that right now too. Um, whether they're coming up to my table, whether I'm setting up the one-on-one or whether it's during the one-on-one, you're just gonna kind of have to feel it as you go. There's no exact, but it's good. And this is the way it rolls. How can I best serve you? To make it easier for you to attain yours or your loved one's wellness goals. If they're not sure, say they're just kind of looking at you like, huh? What specifically do you mean? Then ask, how can I improve? Excuse me, how can I help you improve things like getting enough sleep, maybe help with pain, your exercise capacity? Or understanding different options for great non-toxic home and personal products. I have a lot to offer, yet it matter most only if it's what you need. And I would totally enjoy bringing a sample of what you would like most. What would that be?
I love that. Oof, that's so great. That is so great. And then, uh, and what about when you are at, say, like a BNI where this is very business-to-business focused? Um, let's talk about this, how can I help improve their business and, and the meeting at their place of business? Because guys, this, this opens up opportunities that you might not even think about, right? I think you mentioned yesterday, Laura, um, I mean, we're obviously, I mean, we'd love to have dentists using essential oils. But couldn't they be running diffusers in their offices?
Exactly.
Oh, that's so cool. So please tell, tell us a little bit about that.
Okay, matter of fact, I do have a dentist and I have a beautician because she wants to keep her, her, um, other, um, stylist, hairstylist well. So, so what I have, and I know everybody can't afford this from the get-go if you're new with Young Living. But I do have diffusers that if something happened, I'm not gonna fall apart. And these are people that are generally trustable to take care of things. So I will often let them have a loner diffuser and then just put the specific oils in there uh, in a little, you know, container or whatever for them and make sure they know how to use it. Matter of fact, a lot of times I go in and I set it up for them. For example, I For example, I can tell them, you know, there's interesting studies that dentists that use like orange oil or perhaps you really love our citrus fresh, that there's generally no reaction because most people have to eat fruit. Because that is a um, what's the word for it? Where uh, objection, where some people have, well, gosh, some people are fragrance sensitive. And I'll say, oh, I get that. I actually am fragrance sensitive. But most people can be around a fruit. An orange or a lemon. And it's very relaxing and yet it's very uplifting. And so I'm going to meet people where they're at. If the kit is not a fit, it's not a fit. I mean, yes, I'll get them for sure, at least to do the wholesale thing and then add in. And then meanwhile, there, I don't go into all of that, but generally they've experienced the hand purifier experience. So it's those type of things that we can think in our mind, what's going to serve them as a business? But once, for the most part, once they actually get a chance to use the diffuser as a loner, they're sold, they're sold. So yeah, so going in and just kind of assessing what may be helpful for them, their staff, most of, they're usually going to want the big pump and then the little hand sanitizer, you know, things individually. Um, perhaps they might want to have some nitro.
Yes.
You know, there's, there's a whole lot. You've got to assess uh, kind of what it is and then, and then maybe do it in layers. You know, don't say, you know, unless they're like, hey, give me everything that I need to run. Fine. Okay, great. We got a thousand dollar order. But you can do it in layers and that's a great way to lead into ER. You don't have to do it all at once, but start the order there and then say, hey, this is another thing that you might want to incorporate the next month.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and especially considering these are people that you are meeting with several times a month or once a week or once a month or whatever the frequency is. The, these aren't just people that, you know, you see once, you know, and they fall off. You see them all the time. So these are also people who, would you say, Laura, the folks that, that you have gotten started on Young Living products um, from these, uh, from these events that you go to or from, from these meetings that you go to, would you say that they have a tendency to stick around and be a little more active?
Oh, absolutely. And you know what? They give me their testimonials.
Ooh, that's awesome.
Because sometimes at the groups at the end, they'll say, okay, do you have any, you know, shout-outs for each other? Be sure you can shout out for others.
Oh, I love that.
Be sure that you can do that. Now there's, sometimes there's somebody that might be, say, in the makeup industry. And we know Young Living has makeup. But makeup isn't my jam and the reason why I really go there. So I might mention it if it comes up, but I'm still there to, so I'm going a little bit, a little bit of a tangent and then I'll come back. I'm there to support them also as a business. So if they have an event, you know, maybe they're at a vendor event or they're having it at their home, somewhere if at all possible, try to go to, you can't do all of them and all at once. Just try to go to one of them once. And kind of, you know, maybe you go to two different business, vendor um, or home events in a month. If you can fit it into your schedule. It shows you support them and it means the world to them that you would show up at their event. And then out of just knowing somebody is trustable, even if you haven't gone to their event, you know, you can just say, you know, wow, I met with, you know, George. And the more I listened to him about his insurance business, I could see that he really cares about people and that he's a great expert in after-retirement investments or whatever it is. When you say that, they're like, ah, inside they're thinking, she listened, she gets it. Maybe other people will get it. Wow, that's a big deal to them. I mean, I know it's a big deal to me and I wind up with people, even if they haven't signed up with Young Living, if I've given them, say, one of the cough bombs because they're sitting there going, they will give me a testimonial or shout-out. Like, wow, that cough drop was the bomb she said it was. That's amazing. So, you know, that's the advantage of selling samples, I mean, sharing samples. And I, again, I make it easy and they all look forward when they get those cotton rounds. I don't pass them every meeting, but ever so often I'm just inspired uh, for the season and I pass them around and people like, ah. You know, I see them while I'm talking, just sitting there with them up to their nose sniffing, so.
Just throughout the whole meeting, right?
Oh, yeah.
While other people are talking and other things are happening, they got, they got their nose in that cotton round. That's amazing. And, and you pass it out with your business card, right?
Yep, yep.
That's brilliant. That is so, so, so very smart. You guys, who loves this? Who is so excited to try this out for themselves? This is golden, this information here. All right, I want to go over just a couple of things. And Laura, if you want to sort of interject here, anything that you do specifically and how you're using Get Oil-ing to pull this off. Um, I made a quick list here of just some ideas for you guys. You can put your Get Oil-ing address, you know, so your website link. You can put that onto a business card. You could put a text campaign connected to that business card or you could share it in a presentation. So for instance, saying something like text, uh, text stress to this number, um, you know, or text info to this number. You could have that on a business card or share it in a presentation. And then of course, obviously, your contact manager. For each person that you meet, you, you've got a place to keep your notes. Um, then you've got follow-up plans that you can apply to make sure that you're reaching out to people on time and in the intervals that you want to. And then of course, you can send those emails and texts out directly to those people from your contact manager where it logs it for you to follow up with them, to set your appointments and so on. Is there anything that you would add or sort of, uh, you know, layer over with, with this info here, Laura?
Yes, do it because I have no idea why. I, I've been with Get Oil-ing a while and I have no idea why I was sending emails from my regular email instead of this brilliant follow-up system. I'm not great at a lot of technology. Get Oil-ing makes it simple. And if I don't understand it, you know, Greg and the team, I just send an email uh, or ask somebody to kind of help me a little bit. And I still have a lot more to learn and to grow. But just having the follow-up reminders and an option. And you know, sometimes there are people that, well, when you, let me go back really quick and say something important. In one of our networking groups, they specifically say, do not take this business card and start emailing people. That's spam. Go to them and find permission. And I think that's important because if you ever gotten emails from people you just meet once and you're like, oh, gosh, and now I'm going to be on this long list. Sure, they can unsubscribe, but that's not the way you want to start your relationship. So I would say, other than an email that just says, hey, you know, maybe you didn't get to talk to them after the meeting, they're out the door, they got to run and you haven't seen them, you know, for several meetings, then just send a email saying, hey, it was great to meet you the other day. Look forward to seeing you again. Make it that way, but don't send stuff about your products and all that. They do not appreciate that. Then the second thing I was going to say is some people are just like at the speed networking. People like, I don't want to do the email thing. Let's Facebook like each other. So we Facebook like each other and eventually you get invited to like their page and vice versa. And then that's a great way on Facebook Messenger that I communicate with people. But using Get Oil-ing, I can still put it in the follow-up contact manager. I can put their information, but it doesn't mean if they don't want to be emailed, I have to email them from that. I do have their email in there, but it still gives me some reminders. You know, because other than that, you know, having a thousand sticky notes all over the place just does not work. And I don't know what I was not thinking before, so use it.
Oh my gosh, I used to be so guilty of a sticky note. I feel like that's a blue thing. Do you have any blues here who can attest to the sticky note problem? Sure, I'm going to get to that. I'll, I'll just put that right here. Yeah, I see you, I see you blue. Um, yeah, so that, that's, that, I think it's a really important thing. And, you know, just especially looking at this from a digital lens with using Get Oil-ing. When you are networking, you really want to keep it personal when you're doing the follow-up. Just because you met somebody and maybe they heard a little bit about Young Living, doesn't mean that they necessarily want to get that text class or that Sway file just yet. Keep it personal until you can have that one-on-one. Or of course, um, if you're using a landing page and campaigns and things like that and they choose to opt-in for that, then great, right? Like they're pursuing that information themselves. But when it comes to something that's coming from you, for folks who are in these networking um, groups in particular, definitely, definitely keep it personal. Because what you're doing here is you're investing in relationships for the long term that could bring you and them untold amount of joy and prosperity, uh, you know, personally and for business. So I mean, really all this is, at the end of the day, is an opportunity to create deep and lasting and meaningful connections with other purpose-driven people in your community. And you know, that, that really has infinite ends, right, in all directions. So, very cool. All right, so guys, if you've got questions for Laura and her strategy, please come over and let us know in the Q and A. Um, Greg, Kim, Amanda, do we have any, uh, any questions piling up there in the Q and A or in the comments for Laura uh, so far?
We do. Uh, I see, yeah, I see one from Diane here. This is towards the beginning of our session. So uh, she asked, as someone who has had surgery, when you find out uh, someone is about to have surgery or had surgery, how do you go about recommending while surgery support and product question? What supportive products do you share?
What I do is I just say, um, I'd love to answer that question. Is there any way we can get together? Or is there any way I can send you, you know, my personal video testimony? Um, you know, or just my testimonial and, and what I use. Everybody's surgery and everybody's body is different. So what I use may not necessarily be the best, but I do have a couple of things that just almost always really, really helps, like lavender. It's just, I went through two bottles within the first month after my surgery. So I just, I, I just kind of keep it simple like that and see from there the best way to contact to them and, you know, and either get them a sample of lavender, talk about it further or whatever. So, um, I don't know, does that help?
Mm-hmm. I think there's an important clarification to add in there is that we're not necessarily just going to say, hey, I know a product. It, it sounds like the, the move would be to, uh, to initiate a more private conversation, right? So if somebody shared, right? If somebody shared in the meeting, in the networking meeting itself, that they had a surgery coming up, that maybe you might approach them separately and say, you know, hey, I've actually been through that. And um, and there's, there's a couple of things that helped me. I'd love to, you know, to see, I don't know, how, how would you phrase something like that? If you were to approach someone who shared that bit of information?
Exactly. I, I would just say, there were some things that helped me and I'd be happy to share that with you. Why don't we do that privately? As well as I'm happy to send you kind of my list of things that I found out the hard way after that I wish I'd known before about maybe using certain equipment or whatever. You know, like the best crutches in the world and all of that. So I try to add value besides Young Living to it. So think of anything else that you know. And they appreciate that. And then all the other people aren't sitting around listening to this conversation that they're like, I'm not having surgery on here, you know?
Right. Wow, yeah, I hope that helps. What else we got? I can't, uh, I can't really see your Q and A without losing my share here.
Okay, yeah. Linda says, oh, this is more of a statement than a question. I have a prospect who says she cannot eat or be around any citrus. It's really challenging. Um, let's see here, mark that one down here. Karen asks, which text campaign would you suggest for your business card?
Hmm. Well, um, I think that it would ideally uh, need to be something that you have written. Um, and, and I would keep it super simple. Um, you know, basically something to the effect of, you know, hey, thanks for, um, you know, thanks for the message. Look forward to getting to know you better. Uh, reply now with, um, you know, the, your number one goal, your number one goal for wellness this year. Um, and, and seriously, keep it simple like that.
Perfect.
Yeah, so, so that it leads toward a conversation, right? Do you have anything like that set up for yourself, Laura? Yet, yet?
Not yet. Well, I do a lot of Facebook Messenger and like I said, the other thing, the, because it's just easier to send a bit. I just, I don't know, some of them really are so busy that they're getting like, like emails, they're getting so many text messages from their kids and everybody. It just seems to be with the groups that I'm in that they prefer that more. I don't know why.
Yeah, yeah. And everybody's going to have sort of a different thing. But I think that no matter what you use, especially if we're talking about, uh, you know, if they're going to come from a networking group, whatever it is just needs to prompt them to reach out to you and to talk with you privately.
Yes, that's, yes, yes. I got which one, which one they like the best. They'll tell you at the beginning.
Yeah, yeah. Fine, that's like getting, getting them one-on-one is the pot of gold at the end of the rainbow. And so whatever you do, whatever campaign you want to create or use or, you know, share or whatever, needs to be a thing that just points to that, that one-on-one.
Yet, don't be discouraged if there's some, some that just so much comes up, so much comes up. You know, maybe they're Realtor and they don't know this is going to come up. And I'm there again for them. I'm not going to say, no, you have to meet with me. You said you would. So if that's not, then work with what you have to work with. You know what I mean? Whether it, it might be dropping by something. I mean, I've done that before. I'm like, you know what? You really need to check this out as a sample. I'm going to drop it by your business. Because it's usually on my way home from the networking because I'm in the area where they have their business. You know what I mean? I do that sometimes because they're important to me. Or perhaps I will send them something else. They're like, how about I'll just message you this little video? It's, and I'll make ones. I'm going to have to be like beautiful. I don't have to have this big set. You know what I mean? And I, you know, we can, that could be a different thing about how to video. But, but basically they just want to know if they were sitting before me, that they could watch maybe 11 o'clock before they, you know, had in their jammies off to bed or first thing in the morning when I'm not up. They just want to know, what is it that I have for them that they were interested in already? And I'll just make them a quick personal video. Or maybe you can make them a quick audio, you know? Um, do whatever fits them. If, if you haven't been able to get your one-on-one in a couple of months and you've tried really hard, make it work. You can.
Awesome, awesome. What else do we got? What other questions?
Yeah, so both Cindy and Jessica kind of asked the same question or similar question like, well, the two questions are, what's the best way to go about looking for networking groups? Uh, from Jessica on Cindy asks, what do you look for when you're checking out a group specifically? How can you tell if it's active and productive?
Okay, so how again, you look would be to um, check the, check meetup or call the local chambers and/or go to any vendor event you see advertised, whether you're part of it or not, and go around, look at the wares, be friendly, talk to the vendors and then say, hey, by the way, do you belong to any networking groups? Get the information. Um, so that's the way to, and then, I'm sorry, what was the second question?
What do you look for?
Oh, what do you look for? Okay. Um, yeah, I have been to a couple of meetings that are so, they were so, I don't know what, loose and not focused and talking about all sorts of interesting things before they started. I could just tell, I don't know how to explain it. You can just kind of tell those that are intentional about networking. Uh, you, you know what I mean? You, you, it, it, once you're there, you're going to know, you're going to know. And if it's a loose group, well, you know, gosh, we, you know, maybe go and ask the leader afterwards, you know? So how many people on the average show up regularly here? And what's your goal to make sure that we can help with referrals and getting to know each other? You know, how, how does that work here? So just ask those questions of the leader. That works too.
Mm-hmm. And I would say reds, those of you who are red personalities, you're probably going to want to skew toward the paid groups, the BNI-type groups. Um, because I, I mean, I know that my red would get sat, would be set on fire from like sitting, sitting in a group and being like, okay, so when do we like get to the thing that we're supposed to be here for?
Exactly.
Yeah. So if you're, if, if you're red, go, go for a BNI, go for something that's got like your, um, you know, your local recruiters and your, um, you know, mortgage loan officers and Realtors and so on. Um, definitely. Okay, cool, cool. Any more, any more questions for Laura in our Q and A in the chat?
Yeah, so Gillian does have one here about, so, or a couple of related questions. Do you have a list of good questions to ask people to help keep a conversation going when you're getting to know them better? That's her first one.
Hmm, I don't have a list. I could probably make it up. And again, I can put things in the comments again later in the day. And then um, screenshot it. I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, awesome, awesome. We can, we can definitely do that and we'll, we'll include those things uh, once we've got them together uh, in the comments below the video recording of this. All right, and um, as, as well as All right, and, um, as, as well as, um, I think, Laura, I think you said you had some typed up stuff around like your quick little one-minute, um, talk, right? And of course, there, there is a replay for those of you who are here live who missed that. Fabulous.
Yeah, I see one more question here. I know we're getting a little faster time, but, do you have any experience joining Facebook groups that are meant for networking? Whether they're a hundred percent online or do in-person events and was your experience good or bad? So kind of, I guess, maybe a blended sort of scenario where they have a Facebook group in person?
Yeah, the networking groups do. They have Facebook. And, um, what I do on those is make it my purpose to do the same thing that I do in person. And that would be, be their fan. So if on that group, um, some of them, like the Chamber, the Chamber Networking Group, they actually have it where you can put a post. You can put a post about a product. You can put a post about an event. So that's pretty self-explanatory. Other ones where we're just like, we got together and we're connecting. So those Facebook groups, um, often will give people an opportunity to give their Facebook, um, you know, page handle, their Instagram handle, whatever. And then make sure you go there, like their page. And it really means a lot to them if from time to time that I will not only put a like on one of their posts, but put a little comment like, wow, look at you go. Or like, wow, that furniture, because there's a furniture store that was one of them. You know, that furniture looks comfortable and yet elegant or whatever. And a comment like that actually gets them re, um, reshown in social media, which means a lot to them. So, yeah, so that's another way to be their fan and to get their favor is to interact with them and you'll find sometimes they will do the same for you.
Beautiful. It sounds like that's a, it's like a supplemental thing to the in-person part of the group, right? So it's not, um, not necessarily like a, an online-only. I think that was, was that part of one of the questions, Greg?
Yes, yep.
Okay, um, I don't know. I, Laura, have you ever, have you ever done an online-only networking group?
Hmm, no.
Okay, I'll, I'll add my two cents in here because I've done both. Um, I do not recommend online networking groups. Um, and you take this with a red grain of salt. Where, where you don't have a, a requirement, a strict requirement for people to adhere to certain standards and behaviors and activities and, and things like that. Um, if they aren't held accountable to those things, it's kind of the Wild West and it can kind of be a gigantic waste of time. Um, where there are networking groups like Laura just mentioned that are supplemental online to the stuff that's offline, then that's, that's a tremendous value. Um, but online networking groups kind of become a low-quality spam fest pretty quickly. Sometimes not, you may find yourself in communities where that can be the case, but you're never really going to be heard, um, and, and, and share in the intimacy that you would have in these offline groups like what Laura has had success with.
Awesome. I think that's it.
Awesome. All right, you guys, come over in the chat. Let us know how awesome Laura is, how much you appreciate her sharing this time and wisdom with us today. Laura, we are so grateful for you for offering this up. This is such a valuable perspective. And I really hope that you guys got as much out of this as we did. I am really excited to see you guys getting out there and getting this thing done. And again, for those of you who are new here or if you watch this recording, you can join us live anytime if you are a Young Living distributor, if you're part of our GetOiling community and you've got something cool to share with us and this message. Uh, but make sure you get over to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession to sign up for future live sessions. What do we got going on in the chat over here? We got a, we have a love fest for Laura happening here. Laura, you see?
We do, yeah. Really good information. Love it. Thank you, Laura.
It helps you guys.
Linda says wonderful, is it BNI and all that? Yeah, okay.
Perfect, perfect.
Well, thank you, Laura. Really appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here with us. Thank you guys for joining us today. Look for a replay. And, uh, we will send out, of course, Laura will, uh, as we get that available, the supplemental information, we'll get that available to you and let you know when it's out. Thanks for coming. We'll see you guys next week.
All right, good night.
Bye.